Thank you, everybody. We greatly appreciate you joining us for our March 25th voting meeting. We will bring the meeting to open and we will entertain motions.
I have it somewhere. Okay. I move to enter into executive session for the purpose of discussions regarding proposed pending or current litigation, collective negotiations, and matters leading to the appointment, employment promotion, demotion, discipline, suspension, dismissal, or removal of a particular person or corporation.
Second.
Moved by Adam, second by Emily. Any discussion, debate, dialogue, conversation? Hearing none. We'll call the question all in favor. The motion passes unanimously, and that includes Garrett Laylaw, who's right behind us. Well done, Garrett. Very good timing. We will do our absolute best. Good folks to be back here at 7:00 PM. Grace, we are returning from public session. We will continue on with our agenda, which begins, are there any modifications or approval of the agenda? Okay, hearing none. We have a number of folks scheduled to speak this evening. A reminder, we have scheduled three minutes for each person to speak. The, by board policy, public comments last 30 minutes at any point in time. After that 30 minutes, the board can choose to extend that time period. Just want to let folks know we'll be paying attention to that time, and then we will proceed from there. I'm going to ask my colleague, Dr. Tripp, to read names. Dr. Tripp may know many of the people, but if not, if there's a mispronunciation of your name, please forgive us. And we would ask if, at all possible, if folks would be willing to come into the microphone. It does better for the recording and for people listening at home to be able to hear what's taking place. And so with that caveat, Tricia, if you're ready with our timer, I will do my best to politely nudge folks if they go over. Again, please also give me grace if I have to cut you off after a particular time, but I'll try to give some leeway. I hope we're all on the same page. So, Dr. Tripp?
First up, Thomas Murphy. Online or here? Okay, we'll come back to Thomas Murphy. Elizabeth Crawford.
Evening. My name is Elizabeth Crawford. I teach advanced writing courses at Ithaca High School. Despite a master's degree, AP certification, and other professional qualifications, and despite a decade of service in the district, I still do not make a living wage in Tompkins County. I'm here tonight to speak to you about teacher salaries. I'm here because I stood in line this year at a local food pantry when I couldn't stretch my grocery budget far enough. I am here because I cannot heat my home or pay for childcare in Tompkins County without public assistance. I am here because it is unethical for the Ithaca City School District to pay its teachers' salaries that are insufficient, that do not rise in step with the local cost of living, and that do not honor and respect their years of experience, professional growth, and commitment. Let's begin with the premise that teachers deserve a living wage. Living wage calculators consider the regional cost of basic needs, including food, clothing, housing, transportation, and childcare. According to MIT's calculator, a family of four living in Ithaca, New York, with two working adults and two children can achieve adequate living standards if each parent earns $66,500 annually. I do not make $66,000, and I am not alone. Fifty-nine percent of teachers employed in this district are presently paid wages that are insufficient. That is to say, those wages fall short of the living wage needed to sustain a working family. The cost of goods and services nationwide has increased by roughly 23% since our last contract negotiation. The district has proposed a 4% wage increase. Why should we accept 4%? Will you try to tell us that the living wage calculations are wrong, that families should be able to get by with less? In fact, the calculations are conservative and do not account for student loan repayments or major life events. ICSD cannot ethically justify denying its teachers a living wage. In addition to a blanket raise, Ithaca should adopt a step-in-lane salary system that rewards experienced teachers for extensive training and professional development. I've worked at IHS for 10 years, but there are teachers with one or two years' teaching experience who make more money than I do. Again, I'm not alone. Seventy-four percent of veteran teachers presently employed by the district have been leapfrogged. To combat a national teacher shortage and to attract new teachers, ICSD did raise starting salaries. But established teachers' wages have not increased concurrently. Thus, the current salary system neither reflects nor respects teachers' years of classroom experience, professional growth, and mentorship. Insufficient and stagnant salaries are fueling high turnover rates. Failing to retain veteran teachers has undeniably negative effects on student learning outcomes, and district can and should do more to retain its educators. Ithaca's teachers deserve better pay, but more so, we need better pay. Healthcare, housing, and food are needs. Childcare is a need. Considering Maslow's hierarchy, these needs are among the most basic and the most essential. Teachers cannot be creative, cannot unlock their potential, cannot experience purpose and find meaning in their work if they're living paycheck to paycheck, laser-focused on survival. The Board of Education is responsible for determining the district's vision and mission. You set an example for our young people and our community. I am asking you today to set the right example, to uphold the right of all persons to live with dignity. Please negotiate with the Ithaca Teachers Union in good faith and agree to a wage raise for teachers that accounts for local living standards, that accounts for inflation, and that accounts for their professional experience and their years of commitment to the school district. Thank you.
Thank you. Jennifer Goodmark.
Good evening. My name is Jennifer Goodmark, and I'm here tonight with my colleagues from the Ithaca Teachers Association to address a crisis that is steadily impacting every classroom in our district, the erosion of teacher retention. There are seven of us. Each of us will introduce ourselves as we speak, and together, we hope to provide a clear picture of what's happening and how we can fix it. Over the past two years, we've worked to understand the scope of this problem, gather data, and propose solutions. Tonight, we're asking the board to authorize your bargaining team to go beyond the current 4.59% annual raise limit and allow a higher overall raise of 7.5% per year. The data supports this ask. More importantly, our students need it. Thank you.
Thank you. Sam Trechter.
Good evening, everybody. Thanks. My name is Sam Trechter. I'm a Caroline teacher. I'd like to continue our remarks. Twenty-one-year teacher in the ICSD, a member of the ITA, and a parent of two children in the district. Let's start with the facts. Forty-three percent of the ICSD teachers are currently untenured, nearly half the workforce. Eighteen percent of ICSD teachers left last year, higher than the New York State average, 14%, and the national average of 12%. We've raised these concerns with the ICSD administration since spring of 2023. We're not seeing normal turnover. We're witnessing an exodus. ICSD lost over 100 teachers last year. That turnover cost the district an estimated 1.57 million, more than the difference between your 4.5% proposal and our 7.5% ask. And our veterans are leaving fastest. In 2015, 83% of our teachers were tenured. In 2025, that number is just 57%. Our students now experience a revolving door of instructors. Speaking personally, I'm a teacher at Caroline. My understanding is that we have the largest percentage of teachers with tenure and years of teaching experience in the elementary schools in the district. And we're not a school in need of improvement. I don't think that's a coincidence. I love Caroline. I like to think that I am an important part of its success, but I'm not absolutely loyal to it as a teacher. If I can make $10,000 more in another district, I don't think I'm the exception. All teachers, like anyone else, have to look after our bottom line. My wife is a teacher in a nearby district. She has three years less experience than me and already makes $10,000 more. She has a step-in-lane system. Soon, that number is going to be $20,000 more. As we've seen at Kaiga Heights, it is a house of cards. If enough teachers leave, the rest are going to follow. The results speak for themselves when teachers leave. The bottom line, you build a foundation in higher-performing schools by paying for good teachers, incentivizing them to stay.
Thank you. Meg Burke.
Hi, I'm Meg Burke, formerly Holbert. I'm the librarian at Northeast Elementary School. I'm continuing our remarks from the ITA. The top reason that teachers leave at ICSD is career wage loss. Consider a teacher who joined ICSD in 2010 with three years of prior experience. Compared to nearby districts, that teacher has now lost between $55,000 and $107,000 in cumulative earnings. Horseheads, $54,901 more. South Seneca, $72,842 more. Trumanburg, $82,317 more. Dryden, $86,164 more. Corning, $107,003 more. That's the cost of choosing ICSD. The cost is a personal sacrifice. It means teachers working multiple jobs are making the devastating decision to leave because the salaries do not keep up with our neighboring districts or the cost of living. I looked at my own salary-structured increases over the last six-year contract and in comparison with inflation. And over the past six years, I have made an average of 0.36% each year in comparison. That is a total of 2.16% total raise in the last six years when compared with inflation, and it's barely survivable. I keep working more and more side hustles, and I am here tonight coming from my third job of the day, cleaning houses. Every year, it is harder and harder to struggle to stay here with no indication it will ever get better, and with neighboring districts offering compensation that lets their teachers go home to their families after school rather than a second or third job. In a recent negotiation meeting, I recounted that I cleaned for the home of a teacher in a neighboring district and thought it really made this predicament ICSD teachers are in eminently clear. That teacher that I clean for has very similar experience to me as an educator, but our salaries are so vastly different that she can afford to pay me to clean her home, and I can't afford not to do it. It's even more striking, given where we live. ICSD is located in an Ivy League town. Tompkins County has one of the highest median incomes in upstate New York. ICSD administrators are paid above the New York State average. This is a community that appears affluent by every measure, except when it comes to retaining teachers. Against all fiscal reason and to our own detriment, we stay for the love of our school communities. But that ability to sacrifice your own well-being for the love of a school is not enough to hold us anymore. Many of us, myself included, just can't keep making the sacrifice. Now, when I walk across, not when I can walk across the street and be compensated my worth and be truly valued to the point, to the point that an educator is all I need to be, no side hustles necessary. Time served in ICSD truly is a sentence and not a commendation that it should be. Anyone with my decade of experience and my graduate credits can walk through that door and is guaranteed to make significantly more and even further beyond across the street. How can a district known for wealth, education, and cultural capital consistently fall so short on teacher pay?
Nancy Braun.
Good evening. Thank you. My name is Nancy Braun, and I'd like to continue the remarks from the ITA. These wage losses aren't accidental. They are the result of structural flaws in our salary system or absence of a system. Without a step-in lane, we are subject to leapfrogging, which is when a less experienced teacher makes more than a more experienced one. It affects 428 teachers in our district, three-quarters of our workforce. It's my understanding that with my 19 years of experience and 67 graduate credits, there are at least 15 of my colleagues who make more than I do with the same or less. And salary compression, when two teachers with the same experience and education earn different salaries, and that affects nearly 185 teachers at ICSD or about one-third of our staff. These inequities erode our morale, our trust, and our retention, and our proposal is designed to fix them.
Katie Morgan.
Thank you. My name is Katie Morgan. I'm a teacher here at Ithaca High School. I just joined this district two years ago, and I have already been leapfrogged. I have 10 years of teaching experience under me, though. I'd like to continue our remarks. We're not here just to name a problem. We're here to offer a solution. We propose a step-in-lane salary system that is competitive with neighboring districts, attractive to new and returning teachers, predictable so educators can plan for the future, and incentivizing with long-term rewards for staying in ICSD. We call this Cappy Salary Model. Of the 34 school districts within an hour of Ithaca, 25 already use this structure. The 7.5% raises we're asking for over four years are how we build it. During this phase, teachers will be placed on the grid based on years of experience and graduate credits. That means some members will receive larger wages than others, larger raises than others. This isn't arbitrary. It's a correction. It reflects the work required to fix compression and leapfrogging. We've prepared explanatory slides if needed. After this brief transitional period, the system becomes highly predictable. Teachers will know what they'll earn next year and 10 years from now. That predictability is one of the most powerful retention tools a district can offer. Thank you.
Molly Fournier Ames.
Hi, my name is Molly Fournier Ames. I'm a teacher at Caroline, and I'd like to continue our remarks from the ITA. So, we appreciate the board's authorization of up to 4.59% raises, but here's the problem. If ICSD implements the step-in lane with just 4.59% average raises, it will take seven years to fix the salary system. Even then, we'll still be making 11, we will still be 11% behind our neighbors. Speaking of neighbors, many of us have needed to move to those neighboring districts, me being one. I've taught here for eight years. Last year, when my now-husband and I were searching for a place to live, we realized that we've been priced out of the Ithaca City School District. I love my community where I teach, and I cannot raise a family there. So let me continue. In contrast, a 7.5% raise annually over four years repairs the salary structure and restores our competitiveness. This year, the difference between our proposal and the district's offer is just $1.1 million. That is less than the cost of last year's teacher turnover. ICSD has ample reserves, and they have not yet built a line-by-line budget. There is time and room to plan for this. The resources are there. What's needed now is a shared will to invest in the educators who make this district strong. The good news, ICSD doesn't need to exceed the tax cap to make this investment. State Foundation aid is increasing by $2.5 million this year, with additional growth projected in future years. Small increases in the tax levy, each under 3%, will generate another $3 million or more annually, all while staying within the cap. And the district has both an operating surplus and more than $6 million in unexpended reserves. This is not about choosing between salaries and fiscal responsibility. It's about aligning predictable funding with a predictable equitable salary structure. And really, it's about investing in your teachers. Thank you.
Thank you. Gina Cassioppo.
I say Cassioppo, but when I went to Italy, I found out I say it wrong, so. I'm here to continue the remarks from ITA. And I think what I would like to start with, though, is that you see the ITA is bringing, bringing not only a problem to you as educators, but also a solution. And I'm just going to start with a little personal story. So this is my 11th year in the district. When I came here, I was pretty much a brand-new teacher, and I took a $40,000 pay cut. On the advice of a new teacher, they always, they said to me, "Don't go for the money, even though you need it. Go for the credits and build up your salary." I've maxed out my credits. I'm at 90. I'm still making less than I did when I was a brand-new teacher in a different district. So my name is Gina Cassioppo, and I teach here at Ithaca High School. And I'm talking to you because I'm asking you and presenting to you with my team that we have the, you have the opportunity to lead with clarity and vision. This isn't about raises for the sake of raises. This is about preserving the quality of education in our district. We ask the board to authorize negotiations up to an average of 7.5% raise over the next four years. That is the minimum necessary to stop the loss of experienced educators. We have the evidence. We have the solution. We now need your partnership. Thank you.
Thank you. Is Thomas Murphy here now? All right.
This brings us to the next part of our agenda, which is board responses. I normally go last as board president, but I'm going to go first in this situation. And that is first to say thank you for everyone who came to speak this evening. Thank you for the Ithaca Teacher Association for engaging in what many would call an innovative negotiation process of having things livestreamed and filmed and archived. And so I'd encourage our community to go and watch all of the sessions that have happened so far. My apologies that I've missed the last couple, but I have watched all of them. And so I think that this is a phenomenal way for us to engage in various ways. And while it may be, how do I want to phrase this? Many of the issues that were raised this evening will be part of the discussion that takes place at Thursday's negotiation. And so as one board member, I look forward to those conversations that take place on Thursday. And I may be speaking for other board members as well, but other board responses.
I just want to also reiterate a huge thank you for coming after very long days of work. And also thank you for, for creating this very innovative opportunity for so many of us to witness negotiations for the first time. It's been a huge learning experience for me, and I've really appreciated being able to kind of hear your, like, the perspective of the ITA and all of the thoughtful data that you've brought forth. So really appreciate that. And continue to, to want to stay engaged and learn more. I, Katie specifically said that you have explanatory slides that you can share. I would very much love that. And I was, I was saying to colleagues a little earlier, it's, there's so much data. There's so much data that, that the district is sharing, that you all are sharing, and so appreciate all of that. Any, any data that you shared today, if there's any opportunity to email that and show us kind of sources and where you got it from, just so that we can kind of wrap our heads around it, I personally just find that really helpful. So thank you in advance if you're willing and able to do that. But otherwise, just really appreciated you all being here.
And just to follow up, please send it to Tricia Barrisford. We'll make sure all board members get it if that happens. Thank you.
I just want to reiterate. Always got the word mumbles, but reiterate my colleagues what they're saying, and thank you so much for coming. I, I can't express how much we do support teachers and, you know, last year's budget process was brutal, and this year, it's just, here we are. And it's just not as easy as we wanted it to be because of that. And we really aren't at liberty to discuss much else because it's to be discussed in negotiations, and I just want to make sure that's understood, right? It's not that we're not engaged. It's not that we don't care, but the place for these conversations are not here. But we hear you, and we care deeply, and we're listening. And yes, any information you want to send, please do, and we're listening, and thank you.
It's, it's always good to receive comments from the public. And not to reiterate and keep going over what my colleagues have said, but I just wanted to give a shout out to my daughter's first-grade teacher who was here to talk. So it was good seeing you.
I don't have anything special to add, but I also want to thank all the teachers for coming tonight and members of the ITA. You know, and just express general support for, for all the teachers, and we look forward to the continued conversation.
Thank you, board colleagues. Appreciate it. We will continue on with our agenda, which brings us to our student reps. And I am unsure who was to go first, whether it's LACS or Ithaca High School. I still think we should do rock, paper, scissors every single time.
That's us, then. All right. Oh, we have a stand now. That's fun. Okay, so English PBats happened almost two weeks ago now. For those who don't know, for the English PBat, 11th graders write literary analysis essays and then give a 45-minute presentation defending their thesis. Students are asked questions by the raiders, which usually include one LSAS teacher and one outside raider. I was lucky, ooh, lucky enough to get a surprise bonus raider, Ms. Earwood. So that's one PBat down, three more to go. The next one on the horizon is science, which is really ramping up. Fundraising is gathering momentum as we approach trip season. After school and on weekends, crews of LSAS students are doing yard work for $12 an hour per person to raise money for their hurricane relief trip to Asheville. This is one of the many trips that is fundraising at the moment. And tomorrow, all of Enfield Elementary's 5th graders will visit LSAS for the day. We're very excited to host them. For most of the schools, students can sign up to shadow individually. But a couple of years back, we started inviting Enfield's 5th grade class to try to boost interest from them. It seems to be working.
All right, I got a few things. The LCS mock trial team has been very hard at work and are preparing for the county competition this Saturday, March 29th. Their devotion is quite clear. Many have stopped doing it for other classes because mock trial must take precedence, which is understandable. The ACS visit to the school without walls up in Rochester went very well. And multiple staff members and teachers and what have you have been talking about it with students and in their classes, really just talking about that very unique experience. Going off of what Emily said, fundraising has been really picking up at ACS. It's a sign of spring, if you will. Three trips that we wanted to highlight tonight are the Hurricane Helene Relief Trip, the Senior Somewhere Trip, and the Aquasansney Freedom School Trip. So Helene Relief is doing yard work. They're also, they're also selling merch and, among other things. And at the end of the day, their goal is to help in their recovery effort in Nashville, North Carolina. The Senior Somewhere Trip, a group of seniors, including myself, have launched a fundraiser selling LCS aux, tumblers, and coffee mugs. And 30% of overall profits will be donated to war victims in Ukraine for food, medicine, and other essential supplies. And the last trip that I'm going to highlight today is the LSAS Aquasansy Freedom School Trip. They have launched a GoFundMe to fund their trip up to the Aquasansy Freedom School. In past years, the trip has built like gardens, greenhouses, and other, other type of things. It's worth mentioning that the trip has raised nearly 50% of its $3,500 goal due to the incredible generosity and support of staff, students, families, alumnis, many of whom have been on the trip before. And finally, last week, a small group of students and staff meant to finalize the proposed mission statement. This is a process that goes all the way back to before Thanksgiving in November. With any luck, we hope to share the finalized and adopted mission statement soon, and it will go out for a final digital vote this week.
My first update, I'm very excited to share that the bathroom mirrors are now bolted back up after a year. So thank you to everyone who got them back up. And last week's, we had Social Justice Week. I talked a little bit about this during the last meeting. It's a success. We were actually in this room. We had 25 class, period-long presentations on a wide range of topics related to social justice. And so I want to give a shout out to the Social Justice Week Student Committee, who made the whole week possible. And then the past few school days, breakfast has been served in front of our school. And so as a result, we've seen more students get breakfast as they come into the school. And so there's been a lot of positive feedback about that. And then Seal of Bilinguacy presentations for the seniors are coming up next week. So we'll be presenting in our own languages to a panel throughout the school day. And then the IHS Orchestra is holding their annual cabaret next Tuesday, April 1st. So that includes performances by both the Chamber and String Orchestras of IHS, and then smaller ensembles and guest musical acts as well. And they have like an international theme, so they'll include music from Sri Lanka, Turkey, Ireland, and many others. And one question I had was, I've been hearing a lot about like ITA Teachers Union negotiations. And I think Dr. Brown mentioned last time in his report that the principals and directors contract was also being worked on. I learned that the ESP, the Education Support Professionals contract, was finished last June, but haven't heard negotiations on that. So I was wondering if there was like progress or plans on this. Yeah, thank you.
So Code Red Robotics successfully completed our six-week build season and performed exceptionally well at the Finger Lakes Regional two weeks ago, ultimately falling to the winning alliance, which was the best our team has seen in three years. And we will compete again in two days at the Tech Valley Regional. Our robot was featured on numerous YouTube recap videos and even on thumbnails where we saved our alliance partner's robot from completely falling over and collapsing and the elevator completely breaking. So we just came up and we supported it before it ultimately fell to its doom. Since then, we met to fix our robot's vision system, which enables both relative and absolute localization on the field. And with these updates, our robot can now automatically align to score game pieces with precision tripling our scoring cycle time. And we're incredibly grateful for the board's support and are optimistic about delivering our best performance since 2017 in two days. And we invite the board to watch this stream on Twitch. On a separate note, we've heard growing concerns about certain food items running, running out early during lunch. And we're currently exploring solutions to improve the availability.
Hey, everybody. So a couple of things here. First of all, the Climate Charette took place on March 22nd, last Saturday. And hopefully this will inform our climate action plan, which we hope to bring before the board later this year, in the coming months, as a part of the Climate Justice Alliance, focusing on areas ranging from operations to climate education, et cetera, that will hopefully build upon the resolution that was passed last year. The International Fair is being hosted this Thursday, and the Ithaca High School Drama Department is opening tickets for the musical The Prom. So shows are going to be on Friday, April 4th, Saturday, April 5th, and Sunday, April 6th. I believe an email should have been sent to you all about this, but if not, you can talk to me and I'll send all the pertinent information. And then the IHS Science Olympiad attended the New York State Tournament this past weekend and placed 24th overall. There are 635 registered teams across the state competing in 23 different events. And most importantly, a pair of two students, one of which is our very own Claire Park from our school, were the state champions of the event in material science, so number one in the state, nobody else. And then I also did also have a question. Do we know the approximate timeframe for when this problem of leapfrogging salaries originated? Because I've been hearing about it for several years now, and I wondered when practice was started. And was it an attempt to incentivize new teachers to come? If so, out of curiosity, has it been successful? And what exactly determines the percent raise that teachers get each year? I know that that's a number of questions, and I only promised one, so, sorry.
Lovingly, we expect, we expect nothing less. Board responses.
Sure, I will go. Emily and Brandon, the fundraising is that, it's not something I've seen. I've no like ties specifically to LACS. But are there ways that like the community can access these cool sounding tumblers and other things that we should know about? And is work, like yard work being offered like across the district or just like in your area?
Yeah. So yeah, these are great questions. An email is going to go out to all the board members with links to the GoFundMe, to order forms, and to order from support for Helene Relief merch. I also am going to talk to our school secretary, Lucie Gervais, to see if we can get like an email with all this stuff sent out through ICSD Communications. As far as I know, yard work services are available throughout the entire district. You don't have to go to ACS. They're grateful to get the money. Yeah, and that email from, from me with some of those links will be forthcoming within the next day or so.
That sounds great, and just very exciting sounding opportunities. And really exciting to see the kind of work and investments that you all are committed to. So thank you for that. Kayman, just wanted to, can I say that right? I just wanted to comment on the climate action work and make sure that you, if you did not hear that we, Sean and I have been reviewing some of the old policies, and one of them is related to, to climate action and work. And so we're really looking forward to engaging you all in thinking about how to update it. So, so thank you for the work that you're doing and look forward to collaborating on that.
Oh, sorry. I'll just, I'll just dovetail on that. Just, I was able to attend the Climate Charette, also learn the definition of the word charette, which was kind of fun. And yeah, and so, and basically just coming from that, the climate, a climate action plan is being developed. And that's going to be presented by the Sustainability Advocates of the ICSD at an upcoming board meeting. So taking into account the community feedback and participation, which was what went, went on at the charette. And so look forward to hearing that, that presentation as well. So we should be talking about that in a couple of months, I think.
Any other board responses?
Well, this was my first time attending LACS PBat, the performance-based assessment task. And it was very, very good. I, what was a surprise, it was a surprise for Emily as for me, because I was free for that period, the first of the sessions. And it was good to be able to see our student rep present. Emily was very engaging, and the empowerment that came as she was talking about the Academic Sigh by Russell Edson, so a poem. So it was really a beautiful process for me to experience firsthand. So I thank you, Emily, that I saw your welcoming presentation at the beginning. And, and, and the Social Justice Week was amazing, as usual, at Ithaca High School. I had attended Voted Matters and the Climate Action Alliance Group. And to just see with the Climate Action Alliance Group, Kayman, I missed you, but you were out getting awarded or at a presentation elsewhere, so. But you were, you were, they referenced you during that time because you're part of that group. But to see the presentation by students, especially two of them were freshmen, and one of them just two weeks prior, who started with the group and was able to give such a riveting presentation for the students who were present.
Yeah, I mean.
Briefly to Kayman, this is our, this is our board responses. And, and I, I have to say this pretty regularly, I apologize to folks that the structure of board meetings does not really allow for discussion. It's something we've complained about for years, but it's, it is what it is. Technicalities are correct. Procedures, Robert's Rules of Orders, not mine.
I, I think I only want to add, of course, thank you as always. I always love everything y'all have to say. Kayman, and, and any references to leapfrogging or negotiations, y'all, like that's not our place to answer. It is for our exec team to answer. So just, you know, like in our board responses, that's really not our spot. So I think that your question was heard and it will be addressed.
Questions? Am I, and am I wrong, Sean?
No, no, I, in particular, if we go back to Kayman's question, I believe that's something that will be directly addressed on Thursday. At least a conversation will take place. It's something that the board is aware of, other folks are aware of. You know, I say this pretty regularly, I probably say ad nauseam, as a former teacher of LACS, also great to hear. I also taught at school without walls. You know, I, I also bring a sort of insight to sort of the long-term longevity of some of these ideas. So I'm looking forward to those conversations on, on Thursday. Emily, if I'm not mistaken, I saw you last evening. So Emily attended a film at Ithaca College Campus called Fancy Dance. It's a film by a Guy O'Connell filmmaker. It's always great to see members of LACS in particular coming to see that film and join us. So thank you to you and your fellow students. It's a powerful film. If folks have not seen it, again, I highly recommend seeing this film called Fancy Dance. Congratulations to Claire. I feel like I have to say that again. We had to double down on that. That is great. Also, great news to hear about bathrooms. That is also good. And I will be happy to support LACS fundraising. And should that include yard work, you know, it would just be an extra. So we'll follow up when we get that, that email. So thank you for sending that information our way. And thank you for our student reps for always keeping us informed. Just greatly appreciated. Continue on with our agenda. Next on the agenda is the Consent Agenda, and we will entertain motions.
I move to approve all consent agenda items listed in Consent Agenda, consideration of accounts, personnel reports, students, and minutes of previous meetings as presented.
Moved by Adam, second by Emily. Any discussion or questions that folks may have? A couple of items that are noteworthy. One, the district working with some of our local school districts to provide health and wellness services. An additional grant from the Ithaca Public Education Initiative. Always extremely grateful for all the work that they do. A program working with Senator Webb around early childhood education as well. And personnel items, but I wanted to make sure we highlighted a couple of those. And if there are no additional questions or debate, we'll call the question. All in favor? And I vote yes, but abstain from the minutes. Thank you all very much. Fantastic. That brings us to our next agenda item, which is the Superintendent Report. Dr. Brown?
Thank you for the opportunity, Professor Brownwell. Just one item before we get to budget conversations, and this one brings me much joy to talk about. As I'm thinking here, I'm reflecting back to 2010. And 2010, I met with every board member about their wishes for our school district. And multiple members at the time in 2010 said, Dr. Brown, we need you to do just one thing for us. Do us a solid. Stabilize the leadership at Ithaca High School. And at the time, if my recollection is correct, there had been 10 leaders at Ithaca High School in 11 years. And it had had significant impact, negative impacts on the community, that kind of a leadership turnover. So I understood very quickly that that was something we needed to focus on. And the job is a complex job, and that kind of turnover was the result of, while it's a very rewarding job, it can be complex in the number of hours one has to work each day, the political, social, political challenges that one faces, the tolls it takes on one's physical, mental, and family health. So we, I learned quickly as I was talking to folks at the high school, the wonderful educators who made Ithaca High School one of the best high schools in the nation, which it is recognized, we've talked about often, that it required an administrator who had a family that would commit to being principal at Ithaca. It wasn't just one person, it was a family approach. And it needed to be somebody who was very talented, savvy, an instructional leader, and committed. And it's, it brings me much joy to be in a space tonight where we've had, we have two people who've been doing that for the last, I think it's about 11 years. Which, to say that at this point in my career and in my life, that is, that brings me much joy and much pride. And as I think about the two educators who have been serving as principal at Ithaca High School, two of the finest educators you will ever see. One who went to Ithaca High School, and while decided to come back and be an administrator, said high school was another conversation, but chose to be here when, when working in another community, and chose to be here because it was time for them to serve at Ithaca High School. And he chose to leave a community and a job behind to come serve here and served as an associate principal and, and when needed to step up, stepped up to be the high school principal at a time where we needed that person. That's Martha Hardesty. And if folks remember who've been around long enough, remember at this table, doing budget discussions back in 2012, 2013, I believe, maybe 2014, we had Mr. Trumble, because he was working and serving on the executive team after we had asked him. I remember the board at the time, we really needed him to be an exec team member. And during that time as a exec team member, when it was time, we had a failed search at the time, and we were, it took us about a year and a half to find a principal, because folks had watched the track record at Ithaca High School. And it had also recognized how difficult it, so we had no one, the pool wasn't very deep. And I never forget, Mr. Trumble came into my office, and he said, send me. I'll never forget that. And that brother's been serving. And when he's talking about a family committing, his children, and his wife, and that dude. And he took this challenge on, and he served, and it has had an impact, but it has been rewarding. He has a high school, he can say he served as principal of for a decade, that has been recognized as one of the best high schools in the nation, top 2% of STEM high schools. 10 years in a row of the College Board Award for increasing the diversity in the highest level course offerings, while at the same time increasing the achievement. Working with educators who he started with teaching in the high school and certain departments, and serving as their leader. Navigating the challenges in our community, the social, political context we and I and we have been navigating. See, the hardest job in this community, and I'll say this, is being principal in Ithaca High School. And if anybody wants to share data or stories or refute that, please bring them to me, because I know what the toughest job is. And I know how long it works. And he did it well. And I love him. And tonight, though, as he told me about via text this morning, first of all, my bedtime is at eight. And this night is not about me. I don't want you to mention my name. He knew I was going to do it anyway. Because that's who he is. But tonight is about celebrating somebody who came to this organization almost on the same day as Mr. Trumble. Back one year apart, I said, when I was in high school. And one of the longest-serving employees in the school district. And has worked, if I'm not mistaken, in almost every building in our school district. And it only takes someone to be at Ithaca Festival or at Wegmans, and she's in that space with you to realize how many young people and how many lives she's touched in a positive way, including my own. One, I have said this publicly, the best teacher I've ever seen. The most loving person I've ever seen. So to follow a Jason Trumbull and a Martha Hardesty, you had to be a superstar in many ways. And we're very fortunate to have someone who's served almost 30-plus years in our organization be the next person to stand up and say, send me. Because they are in a great position. Caroline Elementary is thriving because of her leadership. And she knew that we needed somebody at the high school. And she stood up and said, send me. And she stood up and said, send me. So thank you for approving the consent agenda, which included the appointment of the next principal at Ethica High School. And as I sit in this room, I see a family and I see a team of very talented educators who have committed careers over 30 years to making sure this community is great. And I love them all. So congratulations, Karen Arnold, the next principal at Ethica High School.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for the opportunity.
Caidman, I want to go on record, that was during Dr. Brown's session that someone was allowed to speak from the floor. Just wanted to make, wanted to make sure. I would be remiss if I didn't say two things. Martha, thank you for all the work that you've done. Uh, it is greatly appreciative. Jason Trumbull, this is going to be an emotional time for me as well. It's been emotional. Um, some folks in the community may know that Jason and my father-in-law have a very special relationship as well. Uh, they, uh, they love each other. Um, and so I've been able to get to know you and your family in different ways, but also in particular through that relationship and your work with my brothers-in-law as well. So, it's a blessing. It brought me joy to see you here this evening. So thank you as well. Uh, and Karen, we're, we're here supporting the success. So congratulations. Uh, I was not going to miss that opportunity to, to share that. And then my apologies. Also on the agenda, I feel warrants some recognition. Uh, was, um, a resignation of a leader at the Lehman Alternative Community School. And so I want to acknowledge the work that Deb Patac has done, the commitment over the past number of years. Uh, we thank Deb tremendously for the service and for the willingness to engage. And know as part of the leadership of the, uh, principals and directors union, I, um, want to make sure that we, uh, give some recognition or at least recognize, uh, Deb's long service for our district as well. Don't mess with my silence as a form of transition. School district business that will bring us on to a budget discussion. And we will yield to Dr. Brown and team.
Yeah, well, I invite the team down, uh, which may take a second.
Stephen Lee, that folks are talking.
Thanks for those three minutes to transition, Professor. We wish to, uh, share a few thoughts and some slides to frame the budget discussion and development that's on the horizon for this evening. And as I'm fairly certain folks know, the members of the executive team who are in the space to help lead this conversation and as they introduce themselves, they will, as they begin to talk, they will introduce themselves here shortly. That's all right. So a couple of slides to frame the conversation, uh, for this evening. In board docs, uh, we have information about our budget proposal, uh, the three-part budget, some other technical information. And these slides are intended to simplify it a little bit. And knowing that we're going to get to those very detailed, uh, line items and questions here in short order tonight and in the future, at future meetings. And because of the conversation we've been having, I would say now for the last two years, uh, the budget proposal that in recommendations we have for you as a team, from our perspective, will one, meet the needs of our learners. And if I can step back a bit, uh, we had many budget conversations for the folks who are tuning in for the first time, who want to wear last spring. And even after the initial budget proposal did not pass, we had more conversations about budget. And all along those conversations, we were saying that the budget proposals and the budget that we initially adopted was one that will meet the needs of our learners. And I've said it often, but the, in a high tax state and a person who is uniquely and keenly aware of the, uh, the tax impact on a community and individual taxpayers and what we desire and need to do for our young people, this is a delicate balance. It has always been a delicate balance here. And the board has tasked us and the board has done an outstanding job from our perspective of putting together a funding proposals that balances that and meets the needs of our learners. And if ever putting a budget in front of you that I thought would hurt or negatively impact what we were able to offer as one of the best school districts in the country, I would say that. And from my perspective and 30 years of experience, the budget we're putting forward is one that is strong. Period. And this budget will, and we've heard a lot about contracts and compensation. And I've said it publicly and it's now on the record in our public negotiations. For what we just talked about as far as our teachers and our administration, it's hard to pay educators enough, let's be clear. And that's something that has always existed. I got into this industry because I felt like we could do more to support teachers. And as a teacher, one of my biggest challenges was the ways in which we were compensated. So it's been a journey to figure out how communities can pay educators and more importantly, teachers more. And as we've negotiated contracts in this school district, they, from our perspective, have been aggressive, including the most recent one, which was a six-year proposal, which was at the time seen as very aggressive. And at the same time, it was a contract that we set at the time would take a lot for this board to figure out how to meet those needs. Um, we said at the time, we passed, when we settled on the last contract for six years, it may require us to go over the tax cap and we did. We said at the time, it may require us to go over the tax cap twice in order to meet those kind of contractual obligations. And we attempted to do it a second time. And we still met those obligations. The budget proposal that we're putting in front of you this evening, you'll see in there, it includes a compensation proposal and compensation increases that are aggressive from our perspective. Um, at this point, I heard someone ask earlier about the other bargaining units. We have subtle contracts with all of our bargaining units, except for at the community association. And, uh, you'll see the range of salary and compensation increases that we have settled on. The educational support professionals, it's a tentative agreement that we're waiting on a final signature for. And you'll see that the range in which we've settled has been consistent across those bargaining units. So we'll come back to that. Again, I think it's important for us to recognize that our budget increases have been connected to, which is what people will see is about 80% of our overall budget, people and benefits. And I'm going, you'll see here shortly, we have a slide that speaks to our fund balances. There's been a lot of conversation about reserve and fund balances. We have needed to use our reserves and fund balances to plug budget gaps and budget holes. And that number, as you will see tonight, has gone from a low point of $2 million to upwards, uh, we've had years when we've used eight. And we're going to be proposing something tonight in the, in the sixth range. That is too much. And last year's initial budget proposal and the one tonight is an effort to bring down that reliance on fund balances. And our fund balances, we get those fund balances because of vacancies. We get those fund balances by, uh, position control, there are ways in which we manage a budget to build a fund balance, but at the end of the day, we're still using fund balances and reserves. And we're using it from my perspective and according to our third-party independent auditor, too much. So when you hear, when we hear words like surplus, that's just not a word to use. We are using our, our savings account to fund operational things in a way we should not be doing. Again, we need, this budget that we're proposing tonight is to mitigate what has been an alarming trend from my perspective and not using as much fund balance. And that'll make much more sense in a second when we go. The total dollar amount we're proposing this evening is, uh, 169, 169 million. And you'll see the annual percentage increase from year to year. An overall increase of 3.69% from last year. That's the overall budget that we're proposing. Now, we break this down in the details and we'll talk about it over the next couple of meetings. What does, what makes up this 169 million? How much is it, our tax levy? Some other things to note, the tax levy and the tax rate. I won't go until we did, we do this every year. I still don't think people really get it, but there's a difference between the tax levy and the tax rate. The tax levy is the total amount of money that our community submits to support our schools. The tax rate is that total dollar amount is that number that one is using to back into their tax bill. Yes, and we'll break that down a little bit further here in a second. Tax levy that we're proposing with this budget is around $115 million. Now, let me, while we're here, let me pull up some other data because and I, I'm taking notes from your book, Professor, as a bit of a historian. I, I was asked today earlier that someone who looked at, someone was looking at the board docs and was trying to do some comparisons between the budget we're proposing tonight and what was originally proposed last year at this time. So I want to offer some numbers because the decisions that we made as a board and the decisions that our community made did change the trajectory as far as our budget total dollar amount. And I, Aaron, you referred to this earlier in your, your responses. The budget tonight, uh, the tax levy, uh, this is a total levy. We're looking at about $115 million. Now that levy last year, when we proposed it initially, was going to be around $120 million. Now the tax overall budget is a 163 you saw there. The overall original budget from last year was $170 million. So we're, we're talking five to six, seven million dollar deltas between what was proposed last year at this time. Because I said publicly, it was one of the first time I'd ever talked about compensation increases at this table. This budget proposal that ultimately did not pass, this budget proposal will allow for us to give 20% compensation increases to all of our bargaining units over the next three years. And that's not me talking out of school, that's what I said last year. And I said, if, if not able to get to this type of a budget with the ways we're using fund balances, the ways in which we're trying to support our programs, it was going to be difficult to meet that kind of a compensation promise. And Frank, I'm, I, I hope people see, it's going to be harder for us to meet that kind of a compensation promise when our delta has changed, this trajectory has changed. We're talking about compounds, exactly. We can go deeper. Let me go to the next slide here. Tax levy, tax rate. We've also asked to stabilize or lower the tax rate. That number means a lot to folks. I learned that last year, even more so than ever before. That number is a real number. That number means something for folks. And you'll see, we were at $18, above $18 at one point. We brought it down last year with 1480 with the budget proposal we have on the table tonight. We anticipate, even though that's not a solid number, most years when we propose that initial number, initially it goes down a little bit. But right now with our initial projections, we think it's going to be around $15.20 as a tax rate. One more slide here, fund balance utilization, this is a big one. And this is the one our auditors pay attention to. Not only do they want to make sure our fund balances and reserves are healthy, they also use this when it comes to our, our credit ratings and our bond rating. And they want to see that you're not using your fund balances to the extent we are right now for many, many years to plug budget gaps. You see what we used last year and you're seeing, while it's not a significant difference, it is us trying to stabilize or minimize what we're using in fund balances to plug those holes in those gaps. And again, just framing, put some numbers out there, we can have much more discussion in a second once we put it all out there. The proposal we have in front of you this evening is a proposal and a recommendation. We know the board's going to deliberate. We will come up with a final budget proposal and that budget vote will be on May 13th. I mean, I'm sorry, May 20th with the budget hearing in this room, right, Tricia? On May 13th and we look forward to the feedback from folks. Anyway, tonight we wanted to frame the conversation around numbers and a bit of history of how we got here. And look forward to the questions about what we propose, any adjustments the board wishes for us to make or anything else folks wish to share as far as reactions to where we find ourselves. And I, I said it at our last, at one of our committee meetings, and I'll say it again. What we're proposing is a bit of a rollover budget. As much as I hate that term, we are maintaining our programmatic, programmatic offerings. We don't include any significant cuts. When we were doing, as part of the budget development process, I think the last time we presented where we are with projected revenue and projected expenditures, we were projecting about a $900,000 gap between revenue and expenditures. We were able to, as a team, we went to our administrative costs. And you'll see now, you'll see in the trend data, our administrative costs are down significantly. Significantly. And when we needed to make up that $900,000 gap over the last couple of weeks, we didn't go to fund balances because we wanted to stabilize there. We want that more administrative cost in, in the form of contracts, BOCs contracts, COSs, FTE, you name it. So administrative costs, we've heard our community. We are down significantly. Just wanted to underscore that point. If folks may be asking from the last two weeks, how did we get to balancing the budget without going into fund balances more? That's how we did it. Am I leaving anything out right now, team? Or shall I turn it over to the board for questions of the folks at the table, suggestions and reactions?
So if we were to bring the, um, slide back up with the fund balance and we're down to just using 6.79 million. How did we get to that point? It's a reduction from the last two years.
Sure. Uh, part of that was supporting our reserves a little bit. So we pushed some of the fund balance to some of the reserves that were underfunded. And that's really how we reduced that, the use of our, our fund balance at this point.
And for the folks who are watching, going deep, uh, the last finance committee meeting was all about fund balances and reserves. So we spent a significant amount of time identifying and talking about them, how we've been utilizing them, where we are currently, where we want to be in the future. Let me underscore again, for the folks who are here, the fund balances and reserves are like a savings account. We have been operating on the assumption throughout my career that you don't use those savings accounts to fund operational increases and costs. That is a dangerous place to be because once you, as, uh, my predecessor here said, once you take it out, you have to put it back in. Or it just won't, it's not going to magically appear each year. So using it to fund operational increases like compensation will create a structural gap in your budget. Particularly in a state that is bound by a tax cap. And particularly in a state that is bound by a funding formula. So let's say we were to use $4 million from our fund balances to fund a 4% increase in compensation next year. And let's say we had promised an additional four and four over the next three or four years. Those increases are only going to keep coming. Whereas the fund balances will keep dwindling. If we, if we keep going in there, we'll just keep taking it out until it's all gone. And our bond rating is infected and everything else. Somehow we need to replenish those funds. Or at some point we will be like other organizations and school districts who have not been able to replenish their fund balances, but have used said fund balances to fund compensation increases. And they're hemorrhaging staff or they're having to borrow money to meet payroll. So that's one of the reasons why we haven't suggested or have gotten direction from the board to use our fund balances to fund what we know is going to be an annual increase every year. That compound. And taking money out of your piggy bank does not appreciate, yeah.
Clear. Quick question. So are you saying that the six to seven million that we have up there can't be used for teacher salary increases or anything else operational? Because it relates to our credit score somehow?
Maybe. Sure. So no, it actually is being used to help support the budget currently globally. So it's part of our revenues essentially. So technically it is. So, uh, sort of an explanation for this might help, uh, folks understand how we use this and how it might be utilized fully and not available again. So, uh, year to year, this might, that, that, that fund balance might roll over. Last, so we have physicians that weren't failed. We have other unexpended, um, costs that mean. Last, so we have physicians that weren't failed. We have other unexpendited costs that may not have occurred. And that's why that rolls over. That may not happen from year to year. So it is part of our budget. We expect to spend it. That may not have happened last year, but it might this year. Once it's gone, we can't roll it over again. So I hope that answers your question. That is the fund balance we're using towards the budget, the total one sixty-nine, right? It's part of that one sixty-nine that we're using.
So how much is remaining in our fund balance? How safe do we feel about that? And what are our current ratings?
Sure. We're rated, I'm going to defer to, and this is, I believe it's A, A minus right now. Right. That's our current rating. Double A minus, which is pretty solid. Yeah, I actually want to pull that up. Would you mind?
We have a slide, give us a second. We have a slide that shows that it'd be used in the past.
It was the one I sent you at the end there. Thank you.
And if you could speak to like a healthcare, some of the fund balances or reserve accounts that we probably underfunded with.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Let me bring this up if I can.
Dom, I don't know if the plan is to go through those slides or if it's already been gone through before, but it may be helpful to go through them again. So I don't know. I just want to make sure we're going to get to some of these data points.
Absolutely. And they're all revised too. So happy to do that. So this document here shows all of our reserves. It shows our fund balances. Of note here is on the far right, it talks about our recommended funding levels for our reserves. And that comes from different parties depending on what the reserve actually is. So on the left where it says balance, shows our current balance. On the right, it shows what the recommended balances should be. So where we have the opportunity to fill our reserves, we want to do that. We want our reserves to be fully funded. And I'll just draw your attention, for example, for, to health insurance, health insurance reserve. That's one I think we can all relate to. Health insurance costs have been significantly rising in any industry or any organization that we're all familiar with that. And so you can see what the recommended reserves should be. Although ours is fairly healthy, it's not where the recommendation suggests. And you can sort of see that across the board for the reserves. Our non-spendable fund balance, that's really encumbrances that are currently in place from the previous year and those we expect will be expended. Our appropriated fund balance, that figure has to be adjusted yet. That's currently the six point nine million that's showing there now. That should be adjusted to that figure from eight point seven. That's the one that we reduced and, and tried to fill some of our other reserves with at this point or intend to do that. Those, that's the fund that rolls over. We hope from year to year that we help, help support the budget and take some of the burden off the taxpayer. But again, if that's expended and we fully anticipate that it could be, it's then gone. The final, the unassigned fund balance, that's what the state allows us to keep as that final savings, that four percent limit that we're allowed to keep as, as reserves. And that really truly is essentially a rainy day fund.
And I'll note, Sean, you were here. The gap elimination adjustment, the fiscal crisis, global pandemic, other state aid adjustments. We've used appropriated fund balance to plug some gaps when we needed it. And the social political context that we're in right now with the threats to significant federal, state and local dollars is something we need to be paying attention to. And if that were to come, I would be probably recommending to you all said, we look to our fund balance to fill some gaps while, in lieu of layoffs or in Virginia when it happened in two thousand and eight and ten, furloughs, when he sent my mother who was making fifteen thousand dollars a year home for five days without pay. Like, we gotta be, we gotta be thoughtful about social political context. And where would we go if the bottom fell out from our traditional funding sources? And unfortunately, I hear a lot of that rhetoric as we speak today.
Well, I think it's important for context because, you know, I've been doing this six years and it still takes a while to sink in. So I think about people who are here who might not hear about a lot of this budget things and a lot of new board members. So, you know, we're talking about ratings. We're talking about having the recommended funding level. I mean, what does that mean for our savings, for our revenue? Can you just explain the importance of having those, you know, stellar ratings and how important that is to our fiscal health as a district?
Yeah, on a very simple level, we go out for capital projects, for example. We go out for bonds. That rating is essential because it dictates the percentage that we pay on those bonds. And in real simple terms, that's what it comes down to. And when we're talking about projects that are thirty, forty million or more, up to a hundred and twenty-five million historically, those percentage points can cost. So our bond rating is essential in determining those.
And it wasn't long ago, I keep going back to the history here. We were on the list, what's the name of that list? Is it state watch list for fiscal? There's a list that the state has that puts school districts on notice for fiscal instability. We were on that list not long ago. And I wish I knew the name right now. I'll look it up in a second. But we've worked hard to get back into solid footing and standing. And it's taken us about eight years to do so, and we're there now.
So Dr. Brown, I think many of you understand what the number that's being presented or proposed. And at the same point in time, that tells us little about what is actually being proposed. And so I don't know if there is going to be a little bit more depth in terms of either line by line, section by section. I think that probably many of our questions we would hold on to until we saw that kind of data to be able to engage a little bit more in depth.
And let's do that. There's for our programs and other things, when I say rollover, I really do mean that. Like, it's much of what we're doing today as we sit here.
And we're using state codes here to see for each of these sections.
So this is actually our three-part budget broken down. You've seen this. And this is the revised version to meet the, the proposed budget of one sixty-nine. That, that bridges the gap we talked about at nine hundred thousand with the tax cap that we proposed. The next slide is actually our line.
Hold on, if we can go back to that for a second. So on the left-hand side, that's twenty-four, twenty-five, that's the revote that was approved for by the voters. To the right of that is twenty-five, twenty-six, that's the one sixty-nine that's being proposed at this point in time.
That's correct.
With possible changes from each program. Is that?
Yes.
Admin costs, capital costs. Okay.
Correct.
But can we leave this up for just a quick second?
And so to be clear, when you're saying this, Dr. Brown, you're saying that this budget you feel good about. Can't remember the direct quote, but I mean, we're not looking at any cuts, but we're also not looking at adding anything back that we had removed.
At this point, we're keeping the same ratios and formulas or approaches to staffing that we've had this current years. And that's minimum class sizes at the elementary level and secondary level. At the secondary level, not running a class with less than fifteen students. So that was a tough move and a difficult and challenging move for us last spring. And we are making it work right now. And it's, again, it's challenging, but that's where we're getting used to that new approach to staffing, but not a restoration. Our recommendation is not for a recommendation, but open to any questions, conversations or recommendations or suggestions from y'all.
I guess a big question I have is, you know, just being a community member with three students in, in our districts. You know, I hear concerns about the programs we have being cut, things that are seemingly extra. So for example, at Northeast, there's a wonderful program called Peacekeepers that I know folks here are aware of. Like, people are really concerned that they're going to have to be fighting to keep some of those things that feel like extras, but really aren't. Our students need them. Like, are, are people right to be concerned that that could be on the chopping block? Or is these are things that, like, what we have should stay based on our current budget if it were to pass?
What we have right now will stay. There are no recommended reductions to programs, period. Unless there are some shifts with enrollment patterns and class sizes may adjust. Or a secondary course does not get a fifteen student minimum, that course won't run for the next year. But it not say it won't come back at some point. So no cuts like we all went through and lived through last spring are on the table. If this budget is the one that we adopt.
Well, let's bring that back for a second. Let's acknowledge that there were significant cuts last year to programs, to administration, to a host of things, right? That folks may or may not have understood or anticipated at the time of the vote. And so that's the starting place for us this year is that we made significant cuts last year. And now we're trying to maintain programming. And even if we were not to add anything, and I understand that we are in the middle of contractual negotiations with our biggest union, our largest union. But even if we did nothing more, the budget in theory would increase with a rollover budget, giving what our teachers have already indicated. Cost of living changing, CPI index, inflation. Our goods and services cost more to feed the same amount of students, the same amount of meals, right? So there, there are some, for lack of a better word, natural increases, and that's probably not the best choice. But if, even if we added nothing, there would be an increase in the budget from year to year, unless we had a reduction in programs or reduction in staff and faculty. Is that, am I correct?
Our contractual obligations are in the four percent range and have been. And with a significant portion of our budget, around eighty percent of our budget being in salaries and benefits, folks can anticipate that the budget's going to go up consistently with the contractual obligation.
And you're just speaking about salary increases at four percent. Says nothing about benefits.
Benefits. And it's not saying nothing about our electric bill or our gas bill, all things that are far outpacing inflation. So I need to underscore that, folks. When you see your budget going up three point six nine percent or close to four percent, if offering eight, nine percent increases to our bargaining units or if we settle on contracts in that range, folks, it's a simple math problem. We're all pro teachers. We all want to do right by educators. And I lived through flat increases or two percent. I lived through the two percent world here. And that was a tough day too. But at the time, we were looking at a one or two percent increase to our overall budget or because of the gap elimination adjustment, a budget that was less than the year before. That's why we were living in those worlds. So if folks are anticipating much more than the three or four percent increases when we look at our state aid, we look at our tax cap, then that's the conversation. But nothing we have shows that we're going to be getting much more than a three or four percent increase from year to year.
And then lastly for me, just with those same cost of living adjustments, those same increase in CPI, increase in inflation also explains why folks are looking for an additional increase in salary.
And it's why I was at this table last year saying, we need this budget to outpace inflation. We need this budget to get the kind of compensation increases to our educators that they deserve and needed to live in this community. I said that. And it'd be fiscally irresponsible, intellectually dishonest for me to say, hey, we can still do the same thing with a budget that, as I shared earlier, is about eight, nine million dollars less than what we were operating under when I was making that bold statement.
And I mean, to be clear as a board, that we have done a lot of work this year surrounding ways to generate revenue outside of adding to taxpayer burden. And there have been a lot of conversations to that. And I think, and maybe my board colleagues want to speak to this as well, but the things that we are working on are not things that can, clearly cannot happen overnight, but they can't even, they cannot and have not even happened within the year. So, you know, talking about having representation on the IDA, talking about looking at how our schools are functioning and potential consolidation of certain things to save money. I mean, these are things that are all part of the process in order to create revenue, save money. But we're still working on it. Like, that's, that's something we're hopeful toward. So this budget isn't reflective of anything other than what we can do now while we're busting our butts trying to figure out other ways to remove a tax burden, but create more money for the district.
These things take a long time, y'all. The strategy and the plan, the strategic plan we had in place going into last year's budget proposal was a ten-year plan. Let me remind folks, we had talked about for ten years increasing compensation, stabilizing fiscal stress. I looked it up. Getting out of fiscal stress, minimizing our need to use fund balances and reserve. Those were three big buckets. And we said, those are things, it took us decades to get there. And a pandemic and a recession speeded things, sped things up. But we knew it would take us a while to get out of that. And we put a plan in place to do so. We have big dreams now still to stay stable, minimize our reliance on fund balances and to significantly increase compensation. I will say, it's going to take some time, whether it's this board, me, whoever it is, going to take some time to do that in a way that will be sustainable, that can be sustainable in a way that we can avoid the shift based on the social political contexts that we know are coming. So it's just going to take some time. And our approach is aggressive right now when it comes to compensation.
Do Board members still have any more questions about this slide or do we want to keep? Sorry. Well, I don't, that's what I, that's what I was going to ask. We wanted to go on to some other data points as well before we ask more questions or want to sit here and ask some additional more questions.
I actually have one question I want to make sure we get to because we, we already went past that slide. But you spoke of tax rate, tax levy. We said tax rate fifteen, fifteen, twenty, right? What does that mean for taxpayers? Are we going to offer something on the website for a calculator? Like, what, what is that going to mean for our community?
We can do that. In real simple terms, it's fifteen dollars and twenty cents per thousand dollars of assessed value. Real simple calculation, but we can put that online.
So a small change, I don't remember the slide, but last year it was fourteen something?
Fourteen eighty.
Okay. So it's a very slight change.
Forty cents per.
Much of what we're sharing is going to be on our budget website. And I, sometimes I'm fearful of saying, go to our website. But let's be clear, this is complex stuff that takes years for folks to understand and digest. And that is just a fact. So anyone thinking they're going to listen to the presentation tonight and all of a sudden going to understand our budget, that's just not going to happen. It will require you to dig deep into some information that is available, ask us questions, send us emails, use the Let's Talk portal. Like, this is, it will require some engagement with some very complex. I wouldn't begin to try to understand the City of Vizco's budget. And if I were to go to their meetings and speak about their budget, I would have to do a lot of work to try to have a sense of what even questions to ask. That's the same here too, y'all. Because last year, I remember folks were thinking they were going to watch one of our budget presentations and then it was going to all make sense. It's, so yes, some information's on the website, but whatever way you wish to engage with us, we're asking for your engagement.
Well, I want us to continue because I need some additional more information. But it's also a reminder to folks that if there are questions, folks have done, I think, an amazing job over the past couple of years with the FAQ page. So send those questions in because if you have that question, most likely somebody else does as well. And we've been trying to catalog these for, and there's also previous years FAQs as well. So it is a robust website, maybe not the easiest to navigate. I, I understand that. But there are significant amounts of information. And as a public entity, all information has to be made probably available. So it's there. And if you don't find it, let us know. We'll make sure that it does get out there as well. So let's see what else you have for us.
So Dr. Brown mentioned that, you know, it's a rollover budget. It really, lack of a better term, but it is essentially a rollover budget. And what that allows a district to do is take the time to reevaluate. It's a breather essentially. So it's actually good to be able to do that. This is the line-by-line budget. It's seven pages long, so it's impossible to show on this slide. I encourage you to kind of briefly look at it. Now, in a rollover budget, most of these items are going to increase up based on what you've, what you've seen, the minimal increases. There are some areas that are larger. For example, one of the areas is our, our maintenance of facilities. We know that we need to maintain those at a higher level. So the cost, you're going to see there is an increase there that's somewhat significant, just looking at the building conditions and so on. So there, there was a request for that there. There's an increase. And there's some other areas in there as well that are, that you'll see some slight increases. But again, I'd encourage you to look through that. I can pull the link up, but it, it won't show here. So I can ask you to take a moment to look at that.
And it's in board docs too.
It is.
We don't see it in board docs.
It will be in board docs quickly. Yeah.
Um, question, while we're looking for links, you know, we're talking about maintenance and facilities here. And, you know, some folks understand the importance of utilizing capital budget, or sorry, the capital projects because we do get money back from the state. So how much of our maintenance falls under capital projects and how much of it is just coming out of our pocket? And can you explain to folks listening, you know, the importance of utilizing a capital budget?
Sure. Sure. To some degree, I kind of know that's a, that's a much broader conversation. I know we've had, uh, there, there's been a presentation in the past by, um, the folks who handle that for us, but very basically. So our capital funds, we receive aid on that. And it's, I forget our actual aid amount. I might look to Emily for that, but it's about fifty-two percent that we receive back over time, depending on the work that's completed. That's a totally separate budget than what you see here. This is really our operational costs. Uh, and even some of this is aided as well. It's an expense based aid. So it's along the same calculation as well. But some of these costs are the costs that we have every day on a daily basis, that, that just the standard repairs and maintenance that we have to do. And we have to support that fall outside the capital projects. I hope that helps. It's a very simplified version of that.
What you will see in this budget, Aaron, if I'm not mistaken, is a expense for the debt payments that we have for those capital projects. So while that capital project is a separate budget, uh, the debt that we pay every year is part of the operational budget that we should see. Um, maybe this is also a good time to remind folks a little bit of, of process about where we find ourselves. Uh, we'll be talking about some things later on this evening. I'll be asking the board if you're willingness to have a special voting meeting next Tuesday in between policy and HR. We have a board meeting on April eighth. Um, we are scheduled to do final budget adoption on April twenty-second. So tonight is one of the times that we get to ask questions and explore. And we have other times to do that as well. So there, we're not asking anybody to be like, okay, I'm good with this budget. It's more like, okay, I'm learning what's in this budget and let's keep asking questions over the next couple of meetings. I think that process is extremely important for folks to realize that it will be again, a protracted conversation, not, uh, thank you for showing us, we're good. Um, if it were only that simple, uh, and we know that it's not.
And we'll continue to break this down too in the next meeting. So we'll, we'll share more, more detail as we move along. I believe we have, well, give us some time.
I have a question. Um, during the public comment, there was a comment that, um, two point one percent of state aid where there's an increase of two point one percent. And are we getting that amount or is that New York state? That's the executive budget from the governor that's to be finalized by April first. And is it across the board, two point one percent or for this district? Cause the way I interpreted that statement like it's for this district.
Highly unlikely. It's not across the board. I, I wouldn't assume so. It never has been. Probably just to be a generic increase for all school districts, but not spread equally. I think it probably would follow a similar formula that they're, that they're using now, that complex formula. We did see an increase in aid as we've mentioned before in foundation, but I don't think we'll see that as an even distribution. Alright, thank you. I hope I stand corrected there, but we'll see how that goes. Yeah.
This is backing things up quite a bit now that we're into this discussion. Um, but I am quickly learning that there is a, there is some misunderstanding about what a, but what we're talking about when you're saying you're proposing a budget and what a budget is meant to be. Um, and, and the difference of a budget kind of being a, a plan for people to kind of understand kind of the general plan of where investments are going versus a line by line. Um, you know, showing people exactly where every single tax dollar is going to and what it's being paid for. Can you guys like step back and kind of help people understand like why what we're being given and what, and what the public gets in general is not is a, is a budget proposal with not like a line by line list of every single thing that's going to be spent and where, please?
Sure. Sounds good. So essentially what, what's the level of discretion that we have in the budget? Correct? And so one of the, the methods in, in, in sharing the bud, budget process now, since I've been here is to kind of break it down at a high level and continue to break it down. Uh, and, and to get to those very specific lines where we are tonight. So we started very early with, hey, the state's giving us X amount of dollars as revenue. Right? And that's sort of the same idea when it comes to discretion and, and how it's met. So the board has discretion. You, you approve budgets for us on a global level. And you see it to this degree. And at this point now we're at the, what we refer to as line by line, it can be broken down even further. I mean, much, much further, obviously, right down to an individual salary. So at some point there's discretion for administration that we have because we have to make those decisions on a daily basis. So there is a line there at some point. I'll, I'll let Dr. Brown carry that.
Both that. And, um, that's why I always say a proposed and a recommended budget from us to you. Cause from my perspective, the board vote, this is your budget and, and our budget, but the board is the one who tells us which budget, what dollar amount we have to expend. And you then trust us to navigate between lines, move things along. And most of the things we move between lines are ultimately approved by the board in some ways, um, or looked at by our auditors. So there's some discretion, but not very much in this state.
So if we can, this is part of what I was asking for. Can we, and this slide right here, if I'm not mistaken, can we go back to resist proposed budget factors to the very first, the very first slide? Is this the same presentation?
Uh, no, this is your presentation.
This one?
Nope. It says this right here.
Oh, no, that's, that's my, I'm sorry. It's, it's mine. That's the state revenue slide?
Yep. Can we, can we go back to that and just? No, I think I have a different presentation.
Uh, it should be.
Yep. So can we just start here for a sec and not start here, but spend some time. So part of the question we're being asked about an increase in state aid. Right? So if this is the document that in essence shows that, could you walk us through this now?
So the first part is foundationally, right? That's, that's usually general revenue to help support the budget for the district. So that's where we saw a significant increase from last year.
And partially due to the conversations about the formula changing at the state level. Um, we don't know what that formula necessarily is, but there was a significant change, significant change that benefited us. Uh, we saw about a twelve to thirteen percent increase in, in foundation aid. That's the line we really want to see the increase, increase in. Um, the rest, the next section is expense based aid. But really those figures come from what we've spent in the previous year. It's kind of a projection of where we would be this year. And we receive that aid in the following year. So, um, and we talked about building aid. That one's a bit of a moving target. We never really know. It's a decent estimate, but again, it's based on the projects that we complete and the reimbursements that we apply for. Uh, we expect that, uh, as I've mentioned before, to increase because we know that we have projects coming off and we know that we'll be putting in for reimbursements. That's likely to, to increase a little bit. Um, and again, transportation, uh, aid, we receive that back, uh, based on our use and, and expenses in that area. BOC's aid and excess cost aid follows the same calculation. The next part, I'm sorry.
Please continue.
The, the, real simple, the instructional materials aid works along the same lines. If those are per pupil allocations that we receive for those specific, uh, costs. And that's what gets us to the final state aid figure.
So in terms of our state aid, while there's been a twelve percent, twelve point seven, eight percent increase in the foundation aid that we're projecting the district receives, waiting for confirmation as well.
Right.
The overall total state aid is about a three point one, three point three, one percent increase.
That's correct.
Given some of our building aid that we did not spend as much the prior year as we did the year before.
Correct. That's right.
And it all goes into our general fund. That's something we got to clear up too. Some folks are saying we couldn't use certain A dollars, but all of this goes in general.
And this is both related to what we're talking about and not at the same time. So please for folks to bear with me, right? When I, my apologies, something that I teach with students who are having this conversation now statewide or across the nation, the average is about forty-five percent. State funding forty-five percent, local funding and ten percent federal funding. That is not the formula you see here. We don't, we don't abide by that sort of general average. It's seventy percent locally funded. Twenty-five percent state aid and about five percent additional funds, which would include some federal funds as well as grants as well. So even that total five percent is not all federal money. I just think that given everything that's taking place and people having conversations about Department of Education that are, how we fund education in Ithaca, um, may replicate some other communities. Um, but it's important for us to know about how much of our money comes from the federal government as well. I felt like we needed to understand that part of it.
And to be very specific, our federal funds are about five point two million that we receive in aid.
Can I just jump back in from what I was asking before? Um, can, I think the discretion, your discretion as district, district leadership of how to spend the budget that is approved. That is what I think would be really helpful for people to understand kind of where I, I, I think that there is like a, a significant misunderstanding about, um, how much is included in the proposed budget and how much is up to your discretion. If you can share like, you base it off of like the three central goals that we have that you're focused on. And then where like, how can people get a little bit of a better understanding about, well, where does my, where do my tax dollars go? I want to, you know, I want more details and how can we answer that in even a more kind of like strategic focused way?
Um, and I was, I hope this soundbite gets printed. Um, I don't have all the power people think I do. Let's be clear. Uh, when we put out a formula, um, minimum class sizes, for example, or acceptable class ranges or no class running below fifteen. That is a formula that we're abiding by across the district. Now the discretion may come with, uh, how long does it take to fill a position? Or as we have some open positions right now, which have been open for a while, we're, I'm deciding to keep them open because I'm, one, we got to make sure we build some fund balance. Or we got to make sure we're going to have the funds or a budget that will support us next year in a way where we won't have to make cuts. So discretion typically is around how we manage the lines that folks have access to right now. Not creating a new line, not moving monies around, not, because I've heard those same things too. Um, that you have a hundred sixty-nine million dollars, you can figure out where it goes. That's just not true. Now, just like any manager, um, we decide when we're going to post in, post for an elementary principal. Um, hopefully we find one. And if we don't, then what would happen in that scenario? Will we not fill the position? Will we keep it open? Um, will we use that as an opportunity like we did with some executive team, executive team members and other administrators who've left this year and last, do we keep those open to achieve some savings? So that's some of the discretion. Um, and we do it as transparently as we can. But, uh, hey, we're not making decisions every day about how to place a hundred and sixty-nine million dollars in a different line item. That's something that's publicly available if you want to spend the time to look at the line.
Do we have access to the proposed budget by function code?
Yeah, that's the, the one that I just shared, the seven page document.
We can't, the link isn't working, so we can't.
Can you click on, oh, it's not working on here.
It's, we don't have access to it for some reason. That's not a you thing.
We'll get that to you.
In those seconds, I think another question, um, like Mary in our curriculum meeting mentions, uh, you know, grant funded things such as projects innovation, but that's only so many years. So, you know, our programs that are funded by grants, when those grants go away, what are we left with? You know, what, what are we at risk of losing if we don't, if these grants don't become renewed, uh, et cetera?
You know, I was at this table, we had the, we had no summer program. And other districts in our region have had to stop summer programming. And it took us a few years to build that line item back up in our budget. And then thanks to Mary Grover and some other folks who worked hard to secure grant funding, we were able to build a rather robust program. So like everything else, um, we are planning for these things to be sustainable, but when unforeseen circumstances take place, then all those things are at jeopardy. So I hope I'm answering your question is, uh, the question I think you're asking, how do we support the program that we know are working when some of them are funded by federal programs or monies that are not promised to us? We have to build it or not. And those are tough summers when we had no summer programming here.
I'm going to keep coming back every time I get an opportunity to talk. So once you you delegate responsibility for thinking about like for, for a school.
Yeah.
Uh, um, you delegate responsibility to the school leader to manage a budget that is kind of, that is earmarked for like.
Both then, yeah, there are supply lines at a school, for example, to purchase, uh, instructional materials or textbooks or supplies for the supply closet. Uh, I'm not managing that. Um, I have been in districts where the central office reached out mid-year and say, don't spend any more money because we're facing a budget crisis. We haven't had to do that here, but also, and that's not a line item. When it comes to certain FTE, for example, though, like last year, last spring, we decided, yeah, no class is going to run at our secondary schools. That's less than fifteen. That was a tough one for us. And so we're managing and monitoring how that's being implemented in schools. And when, or, or class sizes at the elementary level, if a class got, gets to twenty-six or twenty-seven, principals are reaching out to us and they're asking if they have authorization to advertise for a new teacher and we're either granting it or not. So I hope this is giving you a better sense of how we manage it. Some things we don't, but there are some things that we are monitoring.
Yeah, no, I, I, I really appreciate you. I, I know that it's a, they maybe seem simplistic, but it's really, it's like difficult for people, I think, to understand these things. So if we were talking about, uh, ESPs in, in a elementary school and the number of that, that are not related like to a IEP plan that are not like required, um, through that. Like is that a school building decision?
Mary, because Mary deals with this every day. So, uh, maybe.
It's a great question on ESPs. So educational support professionals are assigned um, per a student's individual education plan. That's one position. They can either be aides or TAs. What we did last year and the year before is started to norm across all of the buildings. What, there were some building based positions. For example, family liaison TA, math TA. Those we no longer have this year. That was part of the budget efficiency last year. Um, there are some grants that allow us to keep them. So for example, pre-K has a few family liaisons for all of the classrooms. Um, the only non-one-to-one aid or adult support situation that we maintained last year across all eight elementary buildings are building aids, which are in the pre-K classroom. So they work in the pre-K classroom, but they also support lunch and recess.
Okay. Thank you.
I'm searching in through my brain to make sure I'm representing everything accurately. Um, at the secondary level, there are, um, some ENL TAs through title funds. So as we were talking about what is funded federally, those title funds help us sustain some of those positions.
Thank you.
I think, um, I would need a couple, not I would need, I need a couple of things moving forward. Um, I need to see budget expenditures. Um, I understand we have some assumptions about budget revenue and, um, I, I know that the finance committee had part of this conversation, so we can anticipate some revenue assuming that there would be approval of a budget that's put forward with a particular tax levy, right? That part I understand. Um, in addition to that, so that's partly sort of by seeing the budget by function code. And what has changed from year to year would help explain the six million dollar increase from last year's budget to the proposed budget. Um, I would also need to see what a contingency budget would look like. Um, should, uh, the budget be voted down once or twice to see, to get an idea of what that would look like, for lack of a better word, if we were operating under austerity. Um, that would be helpful for me to understand what those expenditures were as well. Um, but without seeing, like I get an idea of the number, I understand where the money comes from. I understand what the ask is of the community. And maybe this is getting to what Emily's asking for, without having a better sense of where the money will be spent or where, more importantly, the increases are from a rollover budget. Um, and where there's some of the reductions are, then it's hard to ask, um, more specific questions that would make me feel uh, better about, um, supporting the budget, if that makes sense. And I don't want to say like I'm not supporting the budget. Um, I know given a number of factors, uh, that even what we, even what's being proposed may not get us to where everyone in our organization would like us to be. That part I understand. Um, but without seeing those sort of maybe even a side by side comparison of those expenditures. Um, that's the part that I think I'm missing as one board.
Weren't we showing the expenditures before when we had twenty-four, twenty-five and like the six column document?
Yeah, I, I need that either printed out for me or I need better glasses or I need, and I also know that that same function code actually goes a slight step deeper than that as well. So So as Dom said, it's a seven-page document. Um, seeing the one page doesn't help me engage in the seven-page analysis. So I need that, that's why I was asking for access to that full document as well.
Just invite folks, uh, April eighth, finance meeting, we'll be looking more at the budget overall and also going through transportation arts and athletics. So come then.
Additional questions, please?
Last year, the original budget was voted down and we had to make, you had to make significant cuts. We had to.
We.
We, we had to make significant cuts. What is your, like, a year-ish later, like, what, not even a year, I guess? What are the takeaways from those cut? Like, are you, since we're talking about a rollover budget and maintaining all of the same, like, not bringing back any of the things that were cut? Like, are you? Does that mean that you're confident that we, that it didn't create like? Harm those cuts? Like, did, is there anything that you feel like we really need to bring back in order to kind of write? Something that had impacts on, on students and our community?
Thanks for asking. Um, bring back? No. Um, harm is too harsh of a word from my perspective, but it did impact our plans. Um, I have adored the small class sizes in the school district. Our class sizes are larger. I have appreciated and love our language program, our AP program. And other course offerings that at times when you walk through those classrooms, there may be five or six students there. That it's been a gift in this community and has made us special. And I miss having it. I want to pay all educators more, particularly our lowest paid, which. Are in bargaining units that we've settled with right now at four percent. While four percent is aggressive, I would have liked to have paid eight or nine. So when that budget went down, that changed our plans, a plan that we have been working towards for a decade. To increase compensation, to maintain one of the best school districts in the nation because of our class sizes and our enrollment patterns, all those things. Now, because we have a great board, a great community, outstanding educators and a team that season, we will navigate it and manage it. The other thing that I, if I can use the word harm, what I feel harmed by and scarred by is we were making those decisions over the course of three weeks. So when I'm stopped in the grocery store and people are upset about the loss of positions or. Programs that we were having to make decisions about in the middle of the summer when people were on vacation. And they were coming back in August and finding out that they weren't here anymore, that hurt. And that's not our traditional program and approaches. We were not able to talk to people. We were not having to have board meetings to talk about why we were making such decisions. We were asked over a couple of weeks to do something that typically takes us years to do. And I am carrying those scars because it's hard to feel good about it. And as the target, people will say, I don't trust the decision, or I didn't like the decision. I'm sure you didn't like, I didn't like it either. You think I wanted to tear apart programs, Mandarin? That I have worked for years to build and bring into this organization, all of a sudden I have to say we can't do it anymore? Uh, somebody substitute teacher position, what do we, that, that position I worked to build over the course of years. I, and having to make those decisions over the course of a couple of weeks and say they are gone. And have to look people in their eyes who I love and recruited to do those roles, that's hard. So I will, the harshness I will put on my shoulders as the leader. But overall, we're still doing good stuff. And we still have a budget that meets the needs of our learners. And yes, I would love to have class sizes that first grade of fourteen. Or have an AP or a Mandarin program that had five, six students. That's beautiful. And maybe one day we get back there. But the fiscal environment does not support it.
Thank you.
Dr. Brown and whomever, I mean, just to go off that question, you know, as someone who, you know, we look at the personnel report. This evening and I see some amazing staff that's left because. I, I think, I assume we, they probably found better paying jobs elsewhere. And as you mentioned, those ESPs are some of our most valuable educators. And, you know, being able, we talked to, we heard public comment about staff retention. And I just wonder, in this current climate, you know, I know as a board, we're working hard to generate revenue. I just wonder. What direction we can go in order to be able to pay people what they're worth as we look to the future and future negotiations? I just don't. I mean, we've, we've talked ad nauseam about legislative advocacy, about foundation aid. And I just, I, I wonder i- in your years, uh, uh, you know, where's the hope here? Of, of how, how to, how to right this ship for public education? Is there any?
Course. Uh, let me be clear, despite that dark commentary I just provided. I'm as most, I'm more optimistic and excited about the future as anybody in the room and having lived through this. And yes, we have an RFP out right now to provide us some technical expertise to look at our expenditures and uh, enrollment projections. And what does that look like? Uh, does it look like more buildings, fewer buildings? Does it look like moving things around? Does it look like selling properties? It look like, that's the work. And I can't, my community right now, they close, Columbia Elementary School is a beautiful place. It had seventy students in it. When I was there and when I taught there and up until about ten years ago. And now there's one elementary school in the entire, not to mention, not saying we're gonna do that, y'all, but after years of study and conversation, they found more efficient ways. To do even better for young people. My niece and nephew went to a school that was much larger and had more access to programming. And was a better, but the folks like myself who wanted Columbia there because of what we always knew, we struggled with it initially, but now I see the benefits. So I am signing up to navigate us through these challenging times in a way where it's gonna be value-add and an enhancement. Not us taking away stuff. I think we can do both. And yes, we will continue to. I, I, yo, s- seven years ago, we were saying we wanted to be aggressive on compensation. At the time, when we proposed something initially, it was not where we wanted to be or the ITA or other folks wanted to be, and we kept working. And we ultimately decided on, decided on six-year agreements with most of our bargaining units. At a number that people had not thought about before. People at this table were upset because we were offering rate forward, four, three and three, right? Because we had not heard of those kind of numbers and we knew at the time that was aggressive and it would require us to be creative in our approaches to, and we did it. Now we're putting numbers out there that people, that is, that are aggressive and frankly are gonna push us and challenge us to do things in. We changed our investment strategies, we consolidated programs, we offered new programs. We figured out other, hey, at one point we were a part of a healthcare consortium, right? That was costing us a significant amount of money and was, you know, we, those increases were far outpacing anything we were able to plan for. So we decided to go self-insured. Y'all, now y'all didn't add a whole lot of staff now. We brought that thirty million dollar program in-house with existing people, Bob, Amanda, myself. And we're now managing a thirty million dollar entity and are able to manage the increase in costs from year to year. So there are ways to do this. And you're right, it's gonna require some seasoned folks and some challenging thinking, but a community of folks too. The us versus them doesn't work. It's us all looking to do the same thing, but we gotta be tight on how we get there.
Uh, to the community and to board members, the document that I had asked for and um, that I was referencing, that I have asked for, that I was referencing. The budget presentation document by function code is now part of the publicly available board docs, if I'm not mistaken for that section. Am I correct about that? It's under the agenda. It's updated now and it's part of the public-facing part of board docs as well, right? So the very document in terms of the budget document, that is the document that we normally engage. And having a conversation about where we're increasing, where we're decreasing, um, that document I think will be much more helpful. For us in terms of having some further deliberations, uh, to Emily's point, like if people want to know where are my tax dollars going? Uh, the bar graphs, that's great, right? The uh, the pie charts, that's great as well. Um, and at some point in time, we're getting down to actual dollar numbers. And so that document would be helpful. Um, it'd probably be good for the board to be able to have some time to um, examine that document again. As one board member, I don't know if other board members agree, I would like to see a contingency budget. Um, and not necessarily making more work for folks to fill this out, but just give me the number at this point in time. Uh, I think I have an idea of what that number would be, but it'd be important for us to, to know and to hear that. Um, but I think that we would probably need some time to digest this um, and come uh, on the eighth uh, for this conversation. Um, in much more, in much more depth. Um, and if needed to add any additional meetings, so we are, the fifteenth is break. That is not gonna work for an additional meeting. But let's see where we are on the eighth. It may mean a meeting on the tenth as well. Additional thoughts, reactions, comments, good folks? And I'm sure a number of us would love this document in print, old-school paper.
We, we can deliver it to you how like the old school days. If we did that every Friday afternoon.
There used to be a Friday afternoon drop-off, you are correct, for board stuff.
I'll, I'll just give my regular reminder that we now are meeting with two different PTAs. We've already been to one of them. It was a very fruitful conversation and they really appreciated us uh, visiting uh, the school and hearing their questions and concerns. And sharing uh, the information that we had. So if uh, from all the other schools, if you want to coordinate with your PTAs. We would be happy to come, come by.
Additional questions, comments?
Just a comment, with the contingency budget, we will also receive this function by code. Which will show what a negative impact may look like.
Yeah.
Yeah.
All right, good folks. Move on to the next agenda item. Fantastic, thank you. Appreciate it. Looking forward to the additional conversations that are yet to come. Um, agenda item eleven point two is a, uh, well, do folks need a break? Are we good? We're gonna push them? Keep going. Uh, I got Jill in my ear. No one else even spoke, but just Jill saying, keep going. Uh, resolution calling the twenty-twenty-five annual district meeting and election of the Ithaca City School District and authorizing related matters. Uh, to board colleagues, knowing that this language wa- was uh, uploaded. Um, earlier today for a variety of reasons. Uh, one idea that we have is to explore what is on here. There are mainly two pressing items from my perspective. Uh, and that is again, the ask of having a meeting next Tuesday between policy and HR. To actually adopt this notice. The notice has to be in a newspaper by April fifth. If I'm not mistaken. So, and we are hoping to hold to an April first deadline. Um, and that, uh, if folks feel comfortable today, we can proceed. Uh, but the key issue is that we would also be voting on a proposition two. Which would include expenditures of money already encumbered, correct me if I'm wrong at this point in time. So we're not asking to raise money, we're asking for the possibility of spending money up to a certain amount. Um, for uh, some additional uh, buses to keep our fleet going. I know folks are ready to talk about our bus fleet at all, as well as some capital outlay projects that we know. Um, have been discussed in facilities, if I'm not mistaken, about some work that needs to be done at some of our elementary schools. So. Yeah. How would folks like to proceed?
I'd like to see, I'd like to see the specifics.
Yep.
Uh, on the capital project expenditures particularly. So we could very well meet between human resources, was that your proposal?
Yeah, my proposal would be to have some conversation about it today, tonight. I know we're getting long. But uh, and then we would need to adopt on uh, April first because we'd have to get it into the paper. Uh, and if we can bring up the language for proposition two, that would be fantastic. Our board members can see it here. Uh, the first part of that annual meeting notice is simply identifying the date of the election as well as the location of our polling. Uh, that seems to be sort of standard. We have not, at this point in time, had any conversation about changing our polling locations. So we'd be the same as we did last year. The date is set by other folks, but we're just sort of approving the date. And the real conversation for us would be uh, the language around proposition two. Um, at this point in time, uh, for our community as well, just to maintain some um, clarity and consistency. Uh, the board has decided not to go out for a capital project uh, in May. There is a discussion and conversation about going out for a capital project in November or December. Uh, as we have some more time to finalize the numbers and the projects. Um, and for other members of the community, this relates to a number of questions that we've been, being asked. Things around BGM, things around South Hill, things around Enfield and Caroline. All those will be part of a larger capital project conversation, uh, that will not be connected to the uh, May vote this year. But it does include, thank you very much, it does include this language, if board members can see it. Uh, about, again, expenditure, not um, revenue, not asking for this money, but the expense of this money.
Having seen the particulars, you're right, these are all things we've discussed a great deal and I'd be ready to vote anytime on this.
Same.
Agreed.
So, uh, again, for transparency sake, a key difference. Last year, we had significant conversation about bus purchasing, in particular our concerns. Or board members shared concerns about the purchase of electric buses. At this point in time, the governor's mandate stands. There's debate about whether that will continue. Um, but by twenty thirty-five, the entire ICSD bus fleet needs to be zero, not the entire ICSD bus fleet. Every public school district in New York State's bus fleet needs to be full of zero emission buses. Uh, we have been on a somewhat regular basis of replenishing our fleet almost every, within every ten years, if I'm not mistaken. So about ten percent of our buses, we've been purchasing every year, taking other buses out of the fleet. Find that that was the fiscally responsible way to do it in terms of repair, miles, wear and tear. Uh, you name it. And so that's how we proceeded. And so the numbers that you see here in terms of the number of buses, the kinds of buses. Um, relate to the needs that we have in not purchasing electric buses. But a conversation about purchasing low emission or zero emission propane buses is the move we made last year in part. And this year, and again, my apologies, I know this has also been discussed at facilities. Um, we know that right now, uh, whether or not ICSD was ready for electric buses, our infrastructure and not just ICSD's infrastructure. The power grid would not support us at this point in time, uh, being able to get additional electric buses. And so that is not the route that we are going. Um, even while folks may have seen, uh, some, a couple of our local school districts in the area are purchasing additional electric buses. But I should ask, how many do we have, just for reference? Yeah.
Right.
Yeah.
Cause at, at, at last week's um, social justice, the climate justice action. The Climate Justice Alliance, the student group, um. Was a bit disheartened that we as a board, as a school district are not moving ahead and purchasing electric buses. And I reminded them that the community said that we needed to slow down.
Yep.
And we listened to the community last year. And as a result of that, they, that's one of the reasons why they want to come and share out again at the facilities committee as well as. Um, try to engage more in the community.
And I think that's a conversation that the board is open to. Uh, and I apologize, I'm looking at talks, I think you and I had this conversation. I'm, right now, if I'm not mistaken, there's a, at least a one-year supply for transformers. Did you and I have this conversation?
Uh, yeah. Yeah, depending on the size of transformers.
Yeah, closer to two at times, right? So even if the district wanted to go all-electric. It, it takes some, a long-term planning, if I'm not mistaken. So Bob, anything that you'd like to add about our, our bus fleet?
Only I will just remind folks that the current technology and I um, heard some promising um, items on. Uh, battery technology, but if that does not materialize, we will not be able to do our entire fleet electric. It, it's just an impossibility at this point. We, we anticipate maybe sixty percent.
Additional questions, concerns? So this is something that the board could vote on today, if the board is comfortable doing so, has seen the number, the projects. That we're aware of, that have been discussed at facilities. Uh, this would simply again to be to put this proposition on a ballot. For this number of bus purchases, as well as setting the polling locations. I'm seeing a couple of head nods, multiple head nods. I'm seeing a couple of head nods, multiple head nods. Not every. Say it again.
It's amazing. Jill, did you look over?
I did, I did. I saw Garrett nodding on Todd.
E- Emily, would you want? Yeah, I'm a, I'm never a fan of, well, I have to be a fan of majority rules because that's what it calls for, but I'm seeing the majority of head nods. So then if that's the thing, then I guess I'll call the question. Uh, should the resolution not pass, it can be revoted again next week if one of the people who did not vote for it, um, raises it again. So just procedurally, what the Roberts rules. So if that's the case, then we'll entertain motions.
Motion to approve resolution calling the twenty twenty-four annual meeting and election of the Ithaca City School District and authorizing related matters. Twenty twenty-five, thank you. Very good reader, but.
It's been moved. Do we have a second?
Second.
Uh, I heard Aaron first. Did Todd, did you second it?
Yeah.
I almost, just for histor- history, I wanted to put Todd out there.
I'll, I'll allow it. I'll allow it.
Moved by Jill, seconded by Todd. How's that? Uh, debate, discussion, dialogue, questions? Uh, hearing none, then we'll call the question. All in favor? All opposed? Any abstentions? We got it. Fantastic. Thank you all very much. Uh, we will move on to agenda items, uh, coming up next. These agenda items, um, for the most part, thank you very much, Bob, appreciate it. These agenda items, um, for the most part are, uh, are formalities of adding Dr. Lisi to, um, authorizations and for, uh, our, as our new business official. So that's what we have for the next couple. At any point in time, anyone has a question, we'll entertain them, but otherwise we'll go through them sort of one by one. Um, that is the, that is up to the board, should they choose for that to take place. It may just be better for us to go quickly one by one.
Right, because not all of the names are the same on each one.
That is correct, right? Uh, agenda item eleven point three will entertain motions.
Motion to authorize Assistant Superintendent for Business Dr. Dominic Lisi and Assistant Super- Assistant School Business Executive Emily Shite to sign agreements, contracts or any obligations with vendors, consultants, contractors or other service providers for the twenty twenty-five, twenty-six?
Twenty twenty-four, twenty-four, twenty-five.
Twenty twenty-four, twenty-five school year.
Second.
Moved by Jill, seconded by Adam. Any discussion? All in favor? Unanimous. It also gives me an opportunity to once again publicly say, Emily Shite, thank you for all that you have done and continue to do. Uh, and will do, right? Good point. Um, agenda item eleven point four will entertain motions.
Motion to appoint Assistant Superintendent for Business Dr. Dominic Lisi as purchasing agent and Assistant School Business Executive Emily Shite as Deputy Purchasing Agent of the Ithaca City School District, Ithaca, New York for the fiscal year twenty twenty-four, twenty-five, twenty twenty-five.
Second.
Moved by Jill, seconded by Adam. Any discussion? All in favor? That is unanimous again. Thank you very much, eleven point five.
Motion to appoint Assistant Superintendent for Business Dr. Dominic Lisi and Assistant School Business Executive Emily Shite to represent the Ithaca City School District on the Workers' Compensation Cooperative Board for twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five.
Second.
Moved by Jill, seconded by Adam. Any discussion? All in favor? Unanimous, eleven point six.
Authorizing, the motion to authorize Special Barris Ford, Clerk of the Ithaca City School District, Ithaca, New York and Dr. Dominic Lisi, Assistant Superintendent for Business, to sign agreements, reports and claims to the State Education Department in connection with the operation of the National School Lunch Program in the schools of the city school district, Ithaca, New York for the twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five school year.
Second.
Moved by Jill, seconded by Adam. Any discussion? Call the question. All in favor? Unanimous again, eleven point seven.
Motion to appoint Lori Mudge as Treasurer of the Ithaca City School District, Ithaca, New York for the twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five fiscal year.
Second.
Moved by Jill, seconded by Adam. Any discussion? All in favor? Eleven point eight.
Motion to approve the designation of Treasurer Lori Mudge and Assistant School Business Executive Emily Shite as the authorized signer for the dispersment of all funds of the Ithaca City School District, Ithaca, New York during the twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five fiscal year.
Second.
Moved by Jill, seconded by Adam. Any discussion? All in favor? Unanimous, uh, and eleven point nine.
Motion to delegate the authority to invest school district monies to Dr. Dominic Lisi, the Assistant Superintendent for Business and/or Lori Mudge, the Treasurer in accordance with sections sixteen oh four dash A and seventeen twenty-three dash A of the education law and any other pertinent regulations.
Second.
Moved by Jill, seconded by Adam. Any discussion? All in favor? Thank you very much. That now officially certifies Dr. Lisi's role with us and other folks as well. Thank you all very much for going through those. Uh, that'll bring us to agenda item, um, yep, eleven point ten, which is a healthcare benefits audit. Uh, as part of, uh, the audit, internal audit, every year, the district has an opportunity to focus on a particular area. Uh, this past year, the ask was to focus on healthcare benefits. Uh, in particular, um, to, particular sense, we have moved things in-house and not just being self-insured, but then also taking care of all the bookkeeping in-house as well. Um, I happen to be the chair of the audit committee. Um, it was, uh, I will say again, congratulations to Emily Shite. It was a phenomenal audit. If I'm not mistaken, there was only one instance where, uh, someone, uh, received healthcare benefits. Um, even though they were no longer working for the district and just, that was the only note that we received. Um, and otherwise it was a very glowing, um, healthcare benefits audit from, uh, our outside auditor. So again, a really good demonstration of sound fiscal management. Greatly appreciate it. I think there's a three or four-page document that is in board docs for folks to see as well. Uh, there are no corrective actions. There is nothing to recommend. It was just the one notice and we've already put, uh, Emily and team have already put steps in place to, uh, make sure we have other, uh, the line, the word is going to leave me. There we go. Other internal controls, uh, for future. So thank you again for that. Um, but why don't we see if there's a motion and then we can ask some questions if anybody has any questions?
Motion to approve the twenty twenty-three?
Yes.
Twenty twenty-four healthcare benefits audit.
Second.
Moved by Jill, seconded by Adam. Any questions, discussion?
Um, question, we did have a community member who sent an email requesting to be on the audit committee. Did that follow through or?
I don't recall.
That was months ago, but.
Uh, we have three community members who are currently serving on our audit committee. I'm going to forget the names of, I'm looking up at. Yes. Jed Ashton, Hee Hee DePew and who? It's hey, hey. Um, and, uh.
That was it, yes.
Yes.
Yes, okay. So that was the community member that, just to, um, reiterate to the community about the, the importance of their involvement and they have, um, requested to be on different committees and so forth. We reached out to them.
Yep, yep.
So thank them.
Yeah, we do thank them for their participation as well. Absolutely. I couldn't hear all that, but Chris. Cr- I, Christina. And I apologize, I can't hear their last name. Any other discussion about the, um, audit? Uh, our next audit committee meeting before we vote is June eleventh, if I'm not mistaken. That's, I think that's the date we decided. April eighth?
Yeah, it would be in June.
Yeah. June eleventh, uh, Wednesday, June eleventh, and that is, we are looking forward to going over our internal audit at that point in time, if everything goes well. The current year internal audit. So we invite everyone to that, but more information will be coming obviously before that time comes. So any other questions about the healthcare audit? We'll call the question. All in favor? That is unanimous as well. Uh, I'm going to ask my board colleagues if we want to make an executive decision. Two things, one, I'm looking at Katie Hart and I know, uh, Katie and Casey did a phenomenal job of sending out a monthly board report that came out for February. Another one will be coming out soon for March. Uh, that will include board summaries and includes links to YouTube videos about discussion items. Includes actions that the committees have taken. And so while we have committee updates for this evening, um, my thought would be that maybe we table those until the next meeting with an understanding that this summary will be coming out soon. Um, the first week in April. And in the meantime, those committee meeting summaries are already posted on the website. So should any community member have a question about what is taking place at any committee, they can go see that there. Uh, but in terms of filling in our fellow board members, uh, tonight may not be the best evening for us to retain additional information. But I, I look to how the board wants to operate. Yeah, Jill has handwritten notes.
I'm ready to go, but it can wait.
Second.
Okay.
Yep, I think we should just say table, but we'll just go from there. All right, so we'll put these on for the April meeting if that works and still go through, sharing with our other board members. In the meantime, feel free to reach out to your colleagues. If that's the case, then we will bring the meeting to a close. Thank you all. We'll see you all soon.